So, um. Martin, is Bruce gonna be? Oh, Bruce.
I don't know.
At least, uh.
So we're not gonna wait.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
I'm not gonna stall.
Please quit. But I'm sure we can just get going at least so too. Uh, can you hear us now, uh, remote? Yes, okay, good.
It's Scott's favorite.
All right, well, thank you, I want to welcome everybody. Uh, this is a board selection workshop, I guess, jointly with the Board of Finance to, um, work on the budget, and tonight we have the Board of Education will be presenting the budget that's been approved by the Board of Education. So, um, with that, then I want to invite up the superintendent. Right, it's here. And, yeah, do you want to go to the podium? And then is somebody sharing your presentation with spring?
Yes, we, but, Jean.
Oh, geez, gonna do that, okay, great.
Sure.
All right. So with that, I will turn it over to the professor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so feel free to stop at any, any point, it might be easier to answer questions as we go along, whatever you prefer. Um, I don't have too lengthy of a, a presentation, but thank you for the opportunity tonight. We're excited to be here with you. Tonight is Chairman Klaskin of the, of the Board of Ed and our central office team. And so, um, get some, some help if you ask some really difficult questions. So, uh, Jean, if you could advance the, the slide.
Hold on one second, it's not cooperating.
Something is tricky with that, I find, is we're sharing everybody.
All right, so, um, I thought what would be helpful tonight is, is to share a little bit about your return on investment. And we are very appreciative of the support we received from the, the town. Um, obviously, we couldn't do anything that we, we do without, um, you know, the support of the, uh, Board Select and the Board of Finance. So, um, you know, we had some really amazing news that the, the Board received earlier this school year when the state did their rankings of districts based on their accountability results. So this is the state system that ranks, uh, districts on a holistic measure, including, you know, test scores and, uh, everything physical fitness, graduation rates, some major things. We ranked out number one in the entire state. So we were thrilled with that news, um, you know, and so, um, we're very happy with that. And, you know, obviously, it's our, our, our staff and students that are really, um, you know, bring us to that level. We have a great administrative team, you hear me talk about that all the time. Um, you know, and support staff is, is amazing, but really our, um, you know, teaching staff and, and students have really been, um, you know, amazing and working hard, and this, uh, I think reflects that. We're also the only district in Connecticut that has five schools of distinction. Uh, schools of distinction are ranked in the top 10% of schools in, in their classification. So high school, you know, middle school, elementary, and, and so, um, you know, again, that was, uh, fantastic news to receive that we're the only district that has all those schools. It's a Jean, next slide. And, uh, just a, a couple other, other measures, this is, this is S back, now this is within our DIRTT. Um, so this is where we, where we rate in, uh, in math within our, our DIRTT and percentage at, at goal. So again, only behind, uh, one district just by a few percentage points in math, when you combine all crazy three through eight and language arts, the next slide, uh, shows similar, similar response. And our next slide is our overview of our finances, feel free to clap at this one as well. And so, I will tell you a little bit later, as, you know, as we go through, I'll, I'll share the, the hard work that got us to this, this point. 3.1, uh, 3.41% is higher than we have asked for in, uh, in recent years. Um, but I will show that all that goes into this and then where we stand. And so, um, you know, I imagine like, like I am that you are, you know, reading local papers, watching the news and, and seeing what districts are, are, are seeing. You, we're seeing districts in the high teens for the first time ever, really, since eighteens. Um, you know, and, and even some districts real close by to us, you know, in the 12, 13% range. So, um, I think that we are seeing the results of, of inflation, higher collective bargaining contracts, and our next slide shows, uh, really where a lot of that comes from. So, um, we are a people-based organization, so the majority of our funding goes directly into, um, our contractual agreements. You know, a few years ago, this would have been an average of 2%. So we're seeing contractual increases, much like the, the town and all the other towns around us, um, in that 3% range, so our average is 3.2%. Um, and then as well, we did not see, um, much turnover. And so, to our benefit, to the students' benefit, we did not see many retirements, uh, last year, we did not see many, uh, teachers leaving us during the, during the school year. Sometimes that, uh, on a budgetary standpoint, uh, you know, has a, a positive impact and reduces our, uh, increase in that area. But without those, uh, teachers leaving and retiring, we don't want that. I think you're also probably aware of the teacher shortage, both locally and nationally. Uh, we've been not totally immune to that. So we've had some positions that have been very difficult to fill. The Board's aware that, uh, we started the school year off down to special ed teachers, and it took about a month and a half for us to fill those positions. So it's, uh, um, not something that we are immune to, but we also are not seeing the major impact that, um, other school districts are, are having. Again, we've been very fortunate to see a consistent staff. We do have, um, the end of our, our ESAR, um, ARPA grants, um, you know, that, again, this is something we see in other districts, uh, grappling with at a, at a different level. We had a grant of $1.2 million, and I think that we came out with a very, um, forward-thinking, smart spending plan, where we did not put it all either into salaries or things, uh, but we did buy a lot of technology pieces, we, we did buy, um, increase some staffing that was going to go away, and then we, we hired four positions that we knew we would want to keep at the end of the grant. We were very upfront with the Board on that. Um, these were positions we would have been adding if we didn't have the grant otherwise. And so we knew at the end we'd be looking at, trying to continue that, that funding. Um, and that's two social workers, so we ensure we have a social worker at each of our buildings, and then two academic interventionists, which had a big impact, I think, of those previous results that, uh, we shared. So substitute coverage, um, you know, increased costs there, we, uh, we don't need to, uh, continue to, uh, increase pay to remain competitive and find, find substitutes most days, it's very difficult to find. We do have a reduction in force of three, uh, positions at Daniel Hand High School, declining enrollment. The others, our other schools are increasing or, or staying steady, um, but Daniel Hand has, um, declined, and so we're hoping to, uh, decrease, um, three ITs, we're hoping to do that through attrition, we're starting to get in, um, and have some conversations with people who are, who are considering retirement, so, um, we still hope that we can do that through attrition, the ice was that HR working on that now. Um, also, when we have a curriculum cycle, and the end of that cycle does, does come around, then we, um, oftentimes are able to realize some savings. So this is a staff member going back to their previous position, they were pulled out to assist us in writing curriculum, so that's the $8,000 reduction. Um, payroll taxes and, and HR benefit, you know, smaller benefit areas, um, go up every, every year, you know, as, uh, payroll goes up, and so that's just a function of, of those areas. Next slide, please. Just a little bit more information on the, on the grant. Um, you know, as I shared, we brought out a funding plan for the three years with, with this year in mind, so it's, you know, not an Esser Cliff, it's more of a Hill, um, you know, that we're dealing with here, but it is important areas, and we, we had some great, um, experiences with, uh, with those staff members that allowed us to, to believe that staff positions sooner than we would have otherwise. Um, you know, and, and there were some funding, uh, there were some initiatives within that, we, and we increased, um, our, uh, ESS program at the middle school with the intention that that would not continue, so that ended a year ago. So, you know, we kind of brought that funding down as we, we got closer. Next slide, please. Again, something I know you're familiar with, the, the last two years, we have seen health insurance increases that we hadn't been seeing before. And so, um, you know, we had, uh, zeros and 2%, so over a number of years that were, um, you know, tremendous, allowed us to keep the, the budget low, but we did see, um, you know, from our consultant, they see a 9% increase for, um, for next year. Our employee groups have continued to, uh, help us offset this, or, you know, our, our teacher group pays one of the highest, uh, percentages in the state, our administrators pay a high percentages as well, and, uh, we've done some great plan design work through collective bargaining, so, uh, thank you to, uh, Heather and, and our, uh, administrators, you know, with the collective bargaining, uh, we've been able to modernize our health insurance plans and, and really, um, offset this increase, you know, again, we've seen the, um, numbers much higher in other places. But as you can see, that, you know, that it's our second biggest line item, so 1.25% of our, um, overall increases is basically just for the health insurance. Next slide, please. Uh, special ed, um, really another success story as, as well, I feel. Um, you know, some of our, our neighbors are adding a number of special ed, uh, teaching positions, uh, additional out placements, uh, items like that. So this is, um, really just us keeping, uh, keeping pace, we're not adding staff in this area. But we have, um, some minor increases on the, on the bottom, we actually, um, you know, have a decrease in, in transportation, which is really, um, amazing because of the cost of, of transportation going up elsewhere. Um, basically, those public and private placement sets, just the increases in those accounts. So students that are outplaced, typically those agencies are increasing 3% to 5% each, each year, and so that's our, uh, our method of keeping pace on that. But, um, you know, again, some other school districts, you see them, uh, many increases in the, you know, million dollar range based on, on special ed. So, uh, we're, we're fortunate that, um, we've been able to do a lot of programming for our students in-house, and, um, had some students, um, you know, age out, um, but we're, you know, not without some, some challenges in this, this account, the state passed on an unfunded, funded mandate just this year. Um, previously, students that were in our, our extended, uh, program where they graduate and then stay with us, it used to be until 21, it got, it increased to 22 a few years ago, and now it's to the end of their school year at 22. Excuse me, so if a student turns 22 on September, typically we would have transitioned them out in, in June, now they will stay for another whole school year. So, um, you know, I think that we do amazing programming for those, for those students and get them ready for, for life after, um, you know, our, our care. But, uh, that was a, a mandate from the state that we, we had no way to, uh, address other than increase our accounts. Next, uh, slide, please. Operating budget, um, so, you know, electricity, pretty standard increase at, at 4%. Water was a, a big one for us, not a, not a huge dollar, um, item, but 18% for that. Um, custodial supplies, and then, um, an account that has been traditionally underfunded as a school district, at one point, we had $700,000 in this account, we're, you know, just, uh, about $425,000 today. Everyone's aware of, you know, how much more anything we do in this area costs, whether it's painting, whether it's carpeting, whether it's, uh, you know, work on our schools, um, we use this line item oftentimes to, um, fix things that might break during the year. Um, you're well aware of the, um, Daniel Hand rooftop units, we spend, you know, tremendous amount of money each year just to keep those, um, float, um, as they are. Even right now, we have some classrooms that are, that are down, um, and are impacted from that, and, uh, hoping to have a fix on that soon. But, uh, this is a, a line item, you know, still underfunded, but we're, we're working on catching up to where, uh, we're, uh, starting to make.
Good question. The last item, planned and cycled maintenance increase. Um, so, i- i- you had some planned and cycled maintenance budget, and it's gone up because of?
Yes, so, um, that was the account I was speaking to, that was, used to be 700,000, it's about 425,000 right now. And so what we're trying to do is play catch-up in a, in a manner where we're not, um, you know, putting a huge increase on, on one year, but we're trying to catch up. But I will tell you that, um, you know, at about $50,000, it's in some ways just kind of treading, uh, you know, water because of the cost of everything. So when we bring, you know, somebody into paying classrooms at the high school, we're paying a lot more than we used to, you know, just a few years ago. Um, you know, we're doing some of the, the word carpeting, things like that, it's just so, so expensive. So we're trying to catch up and make sure, we, we understand we're going, you know, down to, uh, four schools soon, but we still have, you know, a lot of work at, um, you know, the schools that we, we do.
Just one, one.
Thank you very much. Um, so, so in this, the plan of cycle maintenance, so last year was 439, I want to bring it up. We have the set, but that was the budget, we have a sense of actual measures from there?
Yes, we could, um, get to that, well, uh. Yeah, okay, so I can, I can reply to that. Uh, we, uh, that's the area typically that we have other accounts that aren't going to be fully expanded, we try and put money into that and do some projects, whether it's at Brown School or elsewhere, um, but, uh, we'll, I'll, I'll, I'll do that next day or two. Okay, next slide. So we have benefited, as you know, from our expiring debt, um, from the high school bill 20 years ago, um, so we are in the second to last year, so this is the, the biggest years as well. So, um, you see that at 585,000, it's about 0.95% of our, our budget, so our budget would be 1% higher if we didn't have the expiring debt, and you see the number there, um, 367,000, that will be the, uh, decrease for, for next year. So, uh, you know, it's been, uh, uh, something that's been beneficial to us, it's rare that it is on the board's side, so, but it has been, uh, you know, expiring over the last five, four years or so, so we benefited from that, and our, our budget increases percentages. Next slide. So what's new, we have, do have some, um, you know, ranging from some small items to some, uh, bigger items in here. When we originally built a budget, we had looked at funding the Right to Read Act, so this is a, um, state mandate we are dealing with right now, um, at $600,000. So through our deliberations as an administrative team, we reduced it to $100,000, so we are not fully funding where we would be, um, if we were required ultimately to purchase a, a, a reading program. So one of the reasons why I wanted to share our, our results early on was we feel we have a, a, an amazing reading program in most of the schools. We have other districts contact us, contact us all the time to find out what we're doing, we have other district visitors contact, um, Gail to, you know, see our curriculum, have a bit more information, and we're very open with our curriculum, it's, it's out there on the website, um, so probably not a month goes by without Gail being in contact by somebody about our, um, curriculum, you know, we use teachers, um, we do have, um, national programs that are, are, are part of that, we've supplemented where we, where we were with, with great success. So we are actively working with the, with the state right now to, uh, receive a waiver on our program. When this came out in 2022, the intention was that each district would purchase a, a, uh, basically a package program that we would, we would implement. So, um, one of the first things that, uh, Gail and her staff did was get the, the programs, get a, a grade level for each of those programs and share it with our, our staff, and they were very concerned because many of them would share that this was how they were teaching 20 years ago, they don't want to go back to that where all students receive the same thing at, at all the times. And so, one of the programs that's been approved is a teacher manual and 20 student manuals, and you put through, you know, on your own, on your, on your face together. And as opposed to where we are now, where each student is, is reading at his or her level and receiving instruction from our, uh, teachers, support from our care professionals, uh, but they do some whole class instruction as well, so, um, you know, I think our, our results speak for themselves. And so we're working hard, um, through our legislative process, but also through the State Department, we've had, um, one meeting with the state, the ball is in their court at this point, we're waiting to hear back from them, but we're, um, also working, um, Chairman Klaskin's working through CAE, I'm working through the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents to have some flexibility with this, uh, with this legislation, and our two local, uh, legislators have been phenomenal.
What's the estimated cost if we have to implement it?
So what we wanted to do when we were building this budget, not knowing where we stood in that, was to provide the Board and our staff with, you know, basically the, the most flexibility. So, um, we put in what we felt was going to be the most expensive program, which was $600,000, and that would also require us to train our teachers on, on this, so it's a major change for the students, the shift. And so, um, that would also be a different cost for, for training, and we would be doing that in the same summer that we're, um, closing three buildings and moving into two different buildings. And so, you know, basically, everybody within that pre-K, uh, five apple cart's going to be upset at some point, they're going to be moving. Um, and it would just be, you know, poor timing for, for, for us, uh, completely, not to mention, you know, just philosophically how we feel and how our staff feel. Yeah, you know, in a lot of ways, I think this would, um, be a morale killer for our teaching staff because they are, um, well-trained, as, you know, as I continue to share, we have, you know, great, um, you know, consistency of staff, and so we're not facing the challenges of some other districts that, you know, are, are turning over elementary, um, teachers, maybe welcome a, a planned program. So, um, also, we have, you know, we're starting to plan for our new school reconfiguration, so within this, we need to purchase, um, additional STEM, additional music, um, instruments and, uh, programming for STEM, you know, and that's not a huge item, but we're starting to get, um, that in there. Um, athletics, you know, uh, transportation increases, that's a, um, pretty, pretty big item, I believe it's $45,000 to, um, catch up to where we are. Our athletic teams, you know, are smaller, so we're getting less money paid for play, but they're continuing to be very successful, can go in well into the postseason and, and travel around the state. And so, um, we have, uh, you know, run negative in that, this past year. Classroom furniture, so these are just two classrooms where we don't have furniture for next year because we have a group of students moving up to a higher grade level that we don't have, uh, furniture available, uh, for them. Band uniforms, a big, uh, you know, discussion on the board, this is a 10-year replacement cycle, so our, our current uniforms have been in, used for 10 years. So we're hoping to, uh, order those, those uniforms and put them in place sometime into, uh, next school year, it's, it takes about 90 days after order, so, uh, and it's a, it's a, it's a big item, it's $90,000 for, um, band uniforms because we have to order more than we have in the band and, you know, expensive materials. I mentioned planned and cycle maintenance, and we have our, um, accreditation visit, our, our formal accreditation visit, we had a team out last year for, um, any case to see, we'll have the formal visit where a team comes and stays overnight for, uh, two nights, and, uh, we, you know, show them around the high school, and, uh, they take a, a look for accreditation. Next slide. Just another way we've always shown, uh, the budget, like how, so how does this 3.4, uh, 3.41% get calculated? So as I've shared, mostly in, uh, personnel and, and health insurance, um, very, very small items in the, in the other areas, and the debt service decreases that. Next slide. So I want to show our comparable districts that we are aware of at this time, based on what's been reported as, um, Board of Prove. So every, every town has their own budget process timeframe, um, you know, we're a little bit ahead of, uh, others in terms of where we are at this point, having the Board of approval, but we are, uh, you know, the lowest in our, our, our DIRTT, and, um, as well, I believe we are the lowest in the shoreline, based on a, a meeting I attended last week, and Superintendent shared their percentage where they, where they were. Uh, you know, again, I think it's the, the way we approach the ESAR grant, you know, our, our work with, uh, collective bargaining, and, you know, also, um, kindergarten entrance age. So, uh, you may have heard of this as well, I think we took a, a very practical approach to this, where we are working with families who feel that their child that's born, um, after September 1st, so the, the, the law previously was January 1st, state backed it up all in one year to, uh, September 1st. We would have liked to see a, a more gradual approach, but we were working with our families who wished to seek a waiver, and so if their child is, is interested and, uh, the family's interested in having them start kindergarten next year, we've already held one day where they would be screened, and we could give them feedback. And, um, not surprising to us that the, we felt the students, uh, that attended that one day were, were ready for kindergarten, so we're, we're giving them that, uh, that, um, that message. And so families will ultimately make their decision, I think this, in Madison, will ultimately have the impact that we will see, um, students not starting, you know, um, unless they're on that September cusp of, of that timeframe. But these are families that have already done two years of preschool, they have been planning for their, their child to start kindergarten next year, basically, probably since birth. And so, um, you know, we want to work with those families, and we know we have supports to have them be successful, and our teachers report, you know, by, by first and second grade because of the, um, high-quality preschool our families have, uh, attended and, and have worked here, um, that they don't see the, the age difference in the, in the birthdays. Next, uh, slide. I think again, you know, showing that we've been responsible in terms of our, our, our requests, you know, we've had, uh, some really low, uh, years, it is increasing, you know, just like, uh, most districts, we're not seeing the, the huge jumps, uh, which we certainly want to, want to avoid. So this is, uh, this is my last slide. Um, open for any questions, I can always have Jean put back any previous slide, if you want to say something, or. I'll be speaking further on, uh, the topic. Hey, if you had a couple of questions.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for this, I know that, um, you guys have worked really hard, and my, your liaison support event, and then watching your meetings, and, um, it's a, I think you can all attest, it's a tough year all around, um, and not just in Madison. Um, I have a couple of questions, one, we talked about it CIP at length with Emily and Galen, thank you very much, um, but it's the furniture line item. Um, so given that we're contracting schools, right, there'll be furniture presumably left in buildings that, is it feasible to begin to transfer some of that furniture and use it in the new school and, or split it between Brown and the new school so that we're not having to purchase all new, given that times are kind of tough?
Sure, so great question, uh, I can give an ex, a couple examples of where that's going to work and where it's not, it's not going to work. Um, so the new school will get all new furniture, that's part of the, the, the budget. So, um, the new school will see if all furniture is part of their F and E, you know, in, uh, in the, in the budget for that. When we then look at Brown School, we have purchased furniture over the years, and so we have inventoried that and plan to bring as much as possible. Where that, um, may not work is we, Brown School itself has very old furniture, I think, for, as a, as a district, we've kind of ignored that in the past, uh, you know, at times, and not re, refurbished, or, you know, re, renewed that, uh, that inventory, so that's a challenge. But one example is cafeteria tables, and so Brown has cafeteria tables that are set up for really five to six, the sixth grade, you know, it's being used for fourth and, uh, fifth grade. The cafeteria tables at Ryerson and Jeffrey, most of them are built into the wall, and then there are some other tables that we would use if we have to, but again, our, um, our hope is that our, our, our new, you know, Brown will look as similar to the new school as possible in terms of some, you know, those things with, within, it's a very public, uh, cafeteria, so we hope to have, you know, new cafeteria tables as, as an example. Um, you know, there's also some other places where we, we need to, uh, renew the furniture for the fifth grade, uh, within, uh, Brown School. So it is something we're, you know, inventorying now, which definitely is furniture that's going to help save us.
And then my other question, uh, was about the band uniforms, so when I was on the Board way back when, there was a cycle for both athletic uniforms, and as you said, this was 10-year cycle, so, um, can you talk a little bit about that and, and how it wasn't kind of planned for in, in this budget?
Sure, so, we're, band uniforms are different than athletics, is we have a, a budget each year for athletics, and we have a, a, sort of recycle program of every three to five years, but we have money in there each year, and so one year we're buying hockey, the next year we're buying basketball, the next year we're buying, um, lacrosse. Where, where this is different is because we, we can't have a, we don't have a savings account for this, is it, it's just an every 10-year cycle, and so we did know last year this was coming, it was something we talked to the Board about, and if we had end-of-the-year funds, it was one of the things we had kind of looked at as a potential, but this is now at the 10 years, so it would be something that probably 10 years from now would pop up as, you know, a big expense that, you know, isn't there, because there's not that, there's not that annual need, you know, for that, so, um.
Is there a way for us to create an account for that so that every year we're putting a little bit aside? I think that might be a safety question.
You see me shaking my head.
Yeah.
Board of Ed is not allowed to create an unlasting.
Okay.
Account like the Town Ten, I mean, there are opportunities to work through the Town or something, where clients create, but fund like that, and they can ask at the end of each year to put money aside, but that's a whole separate project. a fund like that. And they can ask at the end of each year to put money aside, but that's a whole separate process. The order that alone cannot create.
And I would say, you know, this is, it's not insignificant money, but there's many items that we have that come up every once in a while. So so teacher negotiations come up every three years. We put additional funding into our legal account because we know that those are those are more in-depth negotiations. We have, you know, other items that the curriculum person that I shared, you know, so that was a position that was there for two years and then comes out. So there's definitely within our, within our budget, within our operations, there's a lot of items that will kind of come up at certain times.
I have a couple of questions too. Thank you for that very detailed explanation. The external placements, I see that the request is 9%, $228,000 higher. Are we talking more placements? Are we talking increases to negotiated rates?
Increases to negotiated rates with the facility.
Same number of approximately?
Yes, I know that could change, you know, tomorrow. But yes, it does, you know, it's been up and down. But yes, you know, we have a really good handle on where students are at and their ages and what may be going on. And, you know, as I, as you shared, try and bring students back when we can into districts because we feel that's the best place for them. But yeah, that's really why. And one placement could be 150 to 200,000. So, you know, that's correct.
That kind of led to my next question. Do we have any high-cost placements that are coming offline this year?
We have a few 22-year-olds aging out or, you know, as I, as I shared with that. And we would have some, but then we know we have some others, you know.
That will replace. Approximately how much is ballpark, if you say, is coming off?
How much money or how many students? I let me, I will get that. I think it was three 22-year-olds and I think there was one other high cost student. And then, you know, in terms of dollars, I'd have to go back to or chart that.
Probably our $150,000 placements or thereabouts.
I wouldn't want to guess.
Yeah. Okay. And my other question has to do with the increase in the health insurance. You mentioned that compared to other towns, our staff pays a fairly high percentage. And do you know approximately how much it is or and how long that percentage is? Is it a percentage of the health insurance or is it a certain set amount?
Percentage of the health insurance, they're easily negotiated differently. But our teachers, for instance, they're up to about 24% of the premium they're funding. And our other union groups would be in the range of about the 20% range. So there's been a lot of movement in the contracts over the years to increase the portion of the employees.
So if our increase is budgeted for almost 9%, our employees are paying 9%.
Plus, they might have a percent or a half a percent increase that was also contractually negotiated.
Have we tried to negotiate that rate or have we put it up to bid or as far as health plans?
We put it up just been last year, as you're aware, we're self-funded.
Yeah.
So the board has made a lot of movement over the last, I'll say, eight-year period and moving into high-end actual health plans. So there was significant savings, which allowed us to have those very low zeros and 1% increases because of major shifts in the plan design. We're continually working on modifying some tweaks to the plan design to help mitigate costs. One of the major cost drivers right now is prescriptions. That's been a lot of our focus is trying to manage the prescription costs on the plan designs.
Thank you. I apologize. I need to leave.
Oh, sir, please don't. You want me to extemporaneously? See you, buddy.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I got a couple of comments. And just just for the board of the new members, we can't cut the budget and say, take 50,000 out of lectures until we go back and say, hey, we work together. We cannot pick specific line item. It doesn't work that way. So I want to bring that up. So I have just a few general questions. Could I throw them out at this one at a time or all at once? Or how do you want to do that?
First of all, it's just enrollment. What is enrollment projected over the next few years? What does it look like?
Yes. So we are, as I shared, we're going down the high school, we're predicted to drop, you know, another 20 students or so for for next year. And then elementary wise, you know, we're seeing the the increase, you know, the tick off. So that's, you know, really exciting to to see. We're hoping for new families to come in with with students throughout the grade months. That certainly is easier to plan for.
Right. The elementary is picking up. It can be, it carries on for.
Yeah, we just received a N S D A report the other day, and that continues to show the predicted increase based on birth rate, you know, families purchasing homes, things like that.
So next one, I know we talked about health insurance and I know it went up 1.5 since last year, but 8.8 since this 23. I mean, we're largely self-funded. Sometimes you don't know exactly how good or bad it is before the end of the year. So it's just something that you plan, you do your best and plan for. That was more of a comment. And Katie's comment about the band uniforms and Stacy's answer, you can't have the following funds. So let's see something we would do on this side. I have an off-the-beat question for sports and specifically hockey. I know we're a co-op, girls' hockey specifically. Do people pay from outside? I'm assuming our residents don't pay from outside to the town. Do they pay?
So so both do. Our residents pay at a higher rate. So the standard pay-per-play is $130, I believe. It hasn't gone up in a little while.
I'm biased for talking. Go ahead.
Hockey is 14, 1400, 1300.
Should we charge our residents 13, 14, 15, same?
Yeah, yeah. As you know, the hockey pay for locker room, they've and ice time is tremendous. And we're transporting them over. So it's a very expensive sport. We're happy to have them.
I just want to make the point that the new members of the board that we can't, the second thought.
Any more questions? And then we have some people online. I know I'm going to open it up to any one members that have questions online. Just raise, you know, you can unmute yourself and jump in. So. Now. Okay. Well, I do want to thank you very much. It was very thorough presentation. There may be some more follow-up questions. I'm sure there's a lot of detail.
Yeah, we have some answers to get to. So we'll.
First of all, the numbers in the beginning, the rating, the math, the top, and you're doing, the rest of your team, the team is just amazing. I'm hoping that you can convince the state that, you know, what you're doing and hopefully you don't have to do that. So it's kind of a little ridiculous. And then the last thing for everybody else is obviously the board of finance, we're together, but still the public gets it side. You got to make sure that we do the best we can. So everything is, I'm getting a lot.
And also just, you know, we'll be talking about town budget in a few weeks. And ultimately, it's the two combined. And this where the public ends up, they vote on two separate budgets, but it's that the two combined, they can tackle more. So that's always something top and bottom, I think, is both boards will be expenditure. But once again, very appreciative and very excited to see those numbers actually in terms of performance. It's just amazing. We have two kids in this district right now. You know, this school district is doing an amazing job. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so no other questions? We don't have a public comment for this, so I guess the meeting is adjourned. All right.